Welcome, everyone, to the January 17th, 2024, zoning board of adjustment meeting for the town of Barrington. I'm calling the meeting to order. For those of you who would like to participate, we will be saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a roll call vote of board members, beginning with anyone online?
Paul Thibodeau, present.
Alexandra Simakko, present.
Darryl Hawkins, present.
Jackie Flanagan, present.
And Tracy Hardikoff, present.
I don't know if everyone's microphone is on except yours, Tracy. I could hear you clear, but I couldn't hear anyone else.
Okay, we'll remember to switch to green when we speak. Thank you. Up first is case 24932 and 250133, NR 23, special exception, owner DWS Times Two or X Two, I'm not sure, Holdings LLC. This is a continued case from December 20th. Yep, please come up. Before you have to present anything, we did run the case by legal. We feel comfortable that we can make a motion at this time that a special exception is not required if nothing has changed in your business model from when you presented to planning board. Press the button. So you're, are you lit up green? Excellent.
Lit up green.
Yeah, so you presented to planning board. At the time, you were given a conditional approval. Yep.
As an educational institution.
Has anything changed since then?
We went through a pandemic, and a lot has changed as far as the internal, internal stuff of the organization, but nothing has changed as far as
As far as your business model.
The educational institution, yes.
Very good. So based on the discussion we had with Town Legal, I would move, as a board, that we find no need for special exception at this time, that it not be required, that the code enforcement's determination for special exception being required is, is not one that needs to be presented to this board at this time. That being said, you will require a variance, if anything other than the educational model that was approved through the planning board comes of fruition. Like, if you change anything, at some point, I remember hearing talk of yurts, and I heard talk of yoga, and I heard talk of various business model changes. If there are no changes at this time, my motion would be that no special exception be required and that we refund this applicant's fees. Okay, could I have a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Thibodeau online?
I vote aye.
Simakko, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
Flanagan, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Is that understandable? Because that's what will be written as we're refunding money to you.
Sounds good.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your patience in this matter while we consulted legal. Next up before us, continued from December 20th, is case 23988V-23, variance, owner Michelle Stash, being presented by Chris Berry from Berry Surveying and Engineering. The case was continued because there were only three ZBA members available. The request by the applicant is for two variances from Article Four, Section 4.1.1, Table Two, for the front and side setback requirements in the village district to allow a residential garage of 24.5 feet and 23.2, I'm sorry, I'm saying this wrong, 24 feet, 5 inches and 23 feet, 2 inches to be constructed. The proposed front setback would be 5 feet, 7 inches, where 40 is required, and the side setback would be 16.2, 16 feet, 2 inches, where 30 feet are required. The location is 55 Kate Road, MAP 239, Lot 88, on a total of .65 acres in the village district. Thank you, Mr. Berry, for your patience and coming to visit us again.
Not a problem. Nearly a monthly thing, so. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing the owners here this evening at 55 Kate Road. I think, as the chair read, it's a pretty clear request. There's an existing home at 55 Kate Road, which is in the village district. The home is sort of set up as a split-level home. It's of very modest size on a substandard lot of record. It has an existing septic system tank to the right side of the home, where there's a little bit of ledge. There's a septic system at the rear of the house, and the well is also situated at the rear of the house. And as you can see from the photographs that we've presented to you and maybe the board members have driven by, you'll see the split-level nature that I'm talking about, where you have a lower level that is finished space currently. And as you go up to the front door, you can either enter the home on the lower level or the upper level. And again, based on the square footage of the home, there isn't a whole lot of space inside of the home. There's, you know, modest-sized bedrooms, a small kitchen, and a small dining area, but that's about it. There's currently a small bedroom in the basement, and there's a stairway that goes down to meet that area. And so what the applicants would like to do is add a, essentially, a 24-by-24 garage. It's a little smaller than that, as the chair read into the record. And that is situated on that one lower side of the property. I'm going to come around just to point to the brand. So that's located in this location here. As I point out in my writings, we did an alternative analysis to see if there is a better way of laying this garage out that did not require a variance at first, and whether or not we can improve upon the variance request that we had different location for. So, as I pointed out, we can't place the garage on the, as we're facing at it, the right side of the home. Now, the septic tank is actually in the front garage of the pump line that comes out to the roof. We have a knobbed wedge, this location. Again, the proposal is to have that garage be at the lower grade. You'll see this slopes down at the front of the site, so we can have that, again, that sort of split-level fashion, place outside. We looked at if we moved the house back, further back in the lot, maybe get a side entry. That would require that the driveway be extended closer to the abutting landowner than we're currently proposing. And would really create this odd void space at the front of the site. So if you can imagine just sort of placing that structure here, we would be able to get a better front setback. None of the other features would be necessary. So essentially, we create this odd void space here. And then internally, as you'll see from the architectural views that we provided, the floor plan that we provided, the entrance into the finished space in the second portion of the garage is really accessed by an existing internal staircase. I actually went in, I don't do this very often. I don't, I don't view the internal operations of a home very often when asking for variances, but in this case, I think the applicants will attest, I went into the home to figure out why we can't, why we could not slide it back even just a little bit. And what happens is, you'll see in the staircase, if we were to slide that structure back, the staircase would then be further into the garage. And if we were to really start trying to move where that staircase was around in the house, we go from a small addition project to basically a complete renovation project. And so our request is such that it, it's, there's really no other option in this particular case that I have seen or witnessed on the property. So I also point out in my writings that when you look at the property optically, you can see the home does sit closer to Kate Road than an average home does. Again, this is in the village district where, and this lot and all of the abutting lots are, they were created prior to zoning. They're nonconforming in nature. The closest abutting home to the north is also nonconforming. It's also approximately the same size home that we have here. But it also sits fairly close to the front property line. And if that applicant wanted to put a garage on, they would, they would be in the same position that these applicants are. Part of that reason is that Kate Road, for another project that I've worked on here recently, I've had to determine many of the original road layouts. Actually, Tracy's familiar with this. I've had to find the original road layouts for many, many of the roads in the town of Barrington. And what I found during that research was that Kate Road was laid out from Brewster Road all the way down to Province Road. That was originally all one road. So it went from Brewster Smoke, Kate, and then down into Province Road. And that was laid out as a four-rod road. And so one of the oddities about this particular lot is that everybody operates on this lot and all of the abutting lots as if this were a much narrower road right-of-way. The average road right-of-way is between three rods, 49 and 1/2 feet wide, and sometimes 66 feet wide, four rods wide. This particular road is laid out as a 66-foot-wide road, a four-rod road. And that places the front boundary line much further from the edge of pavement than I think anybody would really realize. The average owner would not know this. And in fact, I submitted the septic design application as part that the prior owners had done. And you'll see the actual septic tank is located within the road right-of-way, because everybody thought the road right-of-way was much further away. And I point all of that out because when we're talking about variance requests, we're always asking relief to the front boundary or the side boundary. And as my grandfather would say, those boundaries, they only stick this far off the ground. You can barely see them. And that's sort of a joke in that you don't really know where that boundary is as you're standing on the edge of pavement. You don't really know that it's a right-of-way that's actually out in front of you another 8 to 10 feet. And so the difference between whether or not we're asking for a variance to a front setback for 6 feet or 10 feet, when the boundary line really isn't something that you can optically see, is really not overly germane. And that was sort of the point of putting all of that in our application package to you and why all that research was relatively important. And then as part of the application I prepared, I put in the, there was a lot liner vision that was done on this property, and it shows the abutting home on it as well. And I wanted the board to see that that home also is situated pretty close to the front boundary and is also situated pretty close to the side boundary as well. So that's sort of the bulk of the background and the narrative. Madam Chair, would you like me to move through the five criteria? Or does the board have questions? So, special conditions of the property exist that the literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in an unnecessary hardship. This test is how is this lot special compared to others in the neighborhood? I have pointed out that others in the neighborhood are also nonconforming, but many of the other opposing lots around us are conventional-size, shape, frontage. This lot doesn't have conventional frontage requirements. It has less than 200 feet of frontage, which means that it's constrained in where you can put a structure. It's constrained based on where an existing home was placed in a nonconforming fashion. It's constrained based on where the home is placed in conjunction to the front setback, and therefore that we, we feel that this is sort of a special lot in the town of Barrington. And not being able to place really any addition on this lot without requiring a variance is an unnecessary hardship but for the fact that the board could supply us relief. Granting the variance would consist, would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and would not be contrary to the public interest. I'm not sure why I didn't combine those next to each other in order, whereas they are substantially the same. The spirit of the ordinance is in general conformity. And this particular lot has already proven to be against the conformity of the existing underlying zoning ordinance. And therefore, I think the ordinance allows for lots to be improved upon. And it's so long as we're not doing so in an injurious manner or doing it in a way that markedly changes the neighborhood, markedly changes the site conditions or the abutting site conditions. I think we are operating within the spirit and intent of the public interest and the ordinance itself. Granting the variance will not result in diminution of surrounding property values. This is a residential use on a residential lot. So when we're talking about diminution of property values, we're talking about are we imposing so much on the property itself that the use is an imposition to the abutting landowners and would reduce their value and their enjoyment of their parcel? And in this case, we are not changing the use of the property in any way that would do so and are not imposing on the abutting landowners beyond what we consider a reasonable amount. I would submit for the record, Madam Chair, that we have a letter from the closest to butter, probably the most affected of butter, who was in support of the application. We didn't have that when we wrote the narrative in the application and submitted that, but we do have that for you this evening. And so therefore, I would point out that we are not diminishing abutting property values through the use of this application. Granting the variance would provide for substantial justice. I think most of the board members know and understand that the substantial justice test is a test of the benefit to the applicant versus a reduction in the, or a undermining of the underlying ordinance and the underlying nature of the property in the neighborhood in general. And so in this particular case, I've pointed out that the gain to the applicant here is actual more usable space, additional parking space. I point out in the application that currently you can fit two cars in the driveway between the edge of pavement and the front face of the structure. This will actually allow for the applicant to park within a garage structure, two cars within a garage, and will allow for visitors and family members to come visit without an imposition on the surrounding traffic infrastructure, the roadway infrastructure, by allowing the site to have additional parking. And so denial of the variance would be an imposition on the applicant. And approval of the variance would not undermine the ordinance whatsoever. This is a special lot and I think is worthy of a variance. With that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
Well, we'll move questions from the board and then open for public comment. Any questions? Okay. We're going to open for public comment. If there is anyone who'd like to speak in reference to case 23988B-23, variance, owner Michelle Stash, in reference to MAP 239, Lot 88. If you would mouse over the front of your screen and click on the raise the hand icon, then our planner can recognize you. That's it, okay. So at this time, I will close public comment. There is a letter of support that is part of public comment. Could you read that, please, Vanessa?
Yes. The letter is dated December 11th, 2023. I, Scott Proctor, am aware of the proposal to build a two-car garage addition at 55 Kate Road, Barrington, New Hampshire, 03825. I am aware that the setback between my property line at 53 Kate Road and the property line at 55 Kate Road will be reduced to 16.2 feet. I approve this change and do not have any outstanding questions or concerns. Respectfully, Scott Proctor, signed on December 16th, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. Berry?
One final comment, because I think it's important. The additional space above the garage is additional living space, meaning it's a small sitting room or family room, I think you'll see on the renderings that we provided. This does not create additional bedroom space and does not create ADU space. And I think that's important when we're talking about adding additions through the use of variances and overburdenment of the lot.
So it would be appropriate with a motion that a constraint be placed, that it not become a bedroom?
I, that's appropriate.
Would anyone like to make a motion at this time?
Sure. So I move that we approve the variance for case number 239-88-V-23-VAR. Special conditions exist such that literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant as defined under applicable law, because this is a nonconforming lot with a structure situated such that there is no way to comply and add this modest addition. And granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and not contrary to the public interest, because there's no imposition, and the garage is in keeping with this cluster of nonconforming lots and homes, and there are no present objections that have been presented to this board. Granting this variance will not result in a diminution of surrounding property values, because good structures support good property values, and there's no indication from what's been presented today that this would cause any negative impact on the applicable property or the surrounding properties, but probably would result in a positive impact. And granting this variance would do substantial justice because it allows a modest improvement on a structure which is nonconforming and to which the zoning ordinances cannot apply without prejudice to the owners.
Seeing as we have a second, could I have a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Thibodeau online?
Thibodeau, aye.
Simakko, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
Flanagan, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Very good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up for the zoning board is case 2265014, appeal, owners Daryl and Michelle Kelly. Request by the applicant for an appeal of an administrative decision that a variance is required from Article Three, Section 3.1.6, Site Plan Review Regulations and Article 19, Commercial Keeping of Farm Animals at 17 Coachman Drive, MAP 226, Lot 50-14 in the Neighborhood Residential Zoning District, presented by Brian Barrington of Coolidge Law Firm, 98 High Street, Somersworth, New Hampshire, 03878. Please come up to the podium. You'll want to be sure that the green button is on. I will advise the zoning board, you've heard portions of this case, at least its fundamental basis. In presenting tonight, you have to look at this case as if you've never seen it before. Brand-new case in front of you. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, members of the zoning board, and thank you for your volunteering for this important position. I think that the variance request had a lot of evidence presented and exhibits. I think that it would be proper to reference the variance case and the evidence and the, and the proceedings that went in there, that, that the evidence could be consolidated for the record for, for this decision as well. So there, because it's entirely consistent with each other. So that, what happened in this case is that a neighbor complained that they felt that there were too many animals on the lot. And their code officer, doing his best to interpret the statute, says, well, if you get a variance, then this would take care of it. As the cases developed, one of the most important statements by the, by the author of the zoning ordinance is that they really hadn't considered goats, and they hadn't considered miniature goats, which is really quite a separate and distinct species. And we went through in the attachment to the appeal and, and also happened during the zoning variance request, basically, the math that's involved. And when the math is applied, the animal density requirement of one per 5,000 square feet for chickens, ducks, rabbits, and others similar applies. And there's 1.976 acres, 85,272 square feet. And if you looked at it that way, you would allow 17 chicken, ducks, rabbits, or similar animals. If you used the large animal definition, which starts in size with sheep and then goes up to cows and horses, then you would have to have, have a variance. So in deciding this appeal, you have to just see that there is no black-and-white answer from the variance. What you're trying to decide is, is the impact upon the land, which is what zoning is about, is the impact upon the land when looking at a miniature goat more similar to rabbits, chickens, and ducks? Or is the impact upon the land of a miniature goat more similar to a sheep, a cow, and a horse? I think everyone here in a semi-ruled community can appreciate the size difference and the manure production and the noise of these two different types of animal groups. We have a, a person with us who'll testify as to the nature of miniature goats. And that's really not, it's a question of fact that people who are more familiar with these animals can give better evidence than me. I do want you to realize, though, that this is not a case of a nonconforming use. This is not a case of someone doing something which the zoning ordinance didn't think should ever happen in this district. This is a unique zone, the Neighborhood Residential District. It was known to be in more rural areas of the town. In a lot of places, it would be called an agricultural rural district. It specifically allowed for the keepage of animals. And it specifically understood that commercial farm operations for any types of animals shouldn't be there. But a lot of people in especially the whole movement called homesteading and self-sufficiency use of the land have a small amount of animals that are for their personal enjoyment and use, and, and pets. And frankly, miniature goats are often a pet, often in the house, as, as it's say. So that is the, the decision that has to be made by the board. And that's all I have.
I have some questions for you. Average weight of a sheep?
The, people will testify, but I, I think 75 pounds that I put in there is, is a fair, is a fair of the smallest sheep or lamb I can think about. But I'd like to defer that to people who know better than me.
And the breed of this particular goat?
Again, I'd like to defer that to the, to them. I mean, it's called a miniature, it's Nigerian, I wrote it down here somewhere. It's called a miniature, it's Nigerian, I wrote it down here somewhere. But again, I'm not the person to ask.
Okay. So you have someone else to present, please?
We do.
Yep.
Michelle Kelly, 17 Coachman Drive, Barrington, New Hampshire, 03825. Okay, I did want to supply some copies of the material. I think one, this is about the chickens, and this is about the goats.
I'm going to ask in your testimony that you give short summation of what you've presented, so that people who will review this online know what's being reviewed, and will enter the three pages into the case file.
As Mr. Barrington stated, the main reason for us obtaining chickens and goats was for a small homesteading scenario. The benefit of the goats would be to produce milk for cheese and other beneficial milk-based applications. Benefit of the chickens is that free-range chickens, it's research has proven that free-range chickens produce much better eggs, they're happier, they're healthier, and the eggs they produce have an exponentially improved health benefit to them. So this was our reasoning, was not just for the benefits they provide, but also for the companionship, because I'm semi-retired and also looking to, they're beneficial from the standpoint of therapy and that sort of thing.
I'm going to interrupt your testimony for a minute, because I think it's important. Is there anyone in your home that has a written doctor's review for a service or companion animal?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you.
But two of my sons have been diagnosed on the autism spectrum, and they enjoy the animals if they, but of course, I don't have a doctor ordering it as medically necessary, no. But it has been shown that goats connect more so like dogs. They're very intelligent, and they know their names. And so, and the chickens free-range, they benefit in that they remove the ticks. We have had no tick. My son was diagnosed with Lyme's at one point, he was bitten by ticks on our property. I prefer not to spray chemicals on my property to eliminate ticks, and the chickens do a great job. The goats, one of the benefits I was hoping to use them for was to eradicate the poison ivy, again, not wanting to spray herbicides and poisons, because I think it affects the other, the wild animals, as well as the animals on the property, my children and so forth. And so that was one of the reasons, too. A question last time that was asked of me is why we chose to position the, why we chose to position the space for the animals where we did on the property? And that was a great question you asked. I wasn't, I really, it just escaped me at that point, but there are two reasons for why we chose to position the containment area for the animals where we did. One is that the leach field for our septic covers the whole mid-area of our, from our house to the first raised planting bed. So it made it very difficult to make it closer to the house, if you will. Secondly, there are big boulders, and that was one of the things, these huge boulders, in order to reposition them somewhere else for the benefit of the goats, it would require heavy equipment, and that would require that the heavy equipment would drive over our leach field, which would then potentially damage the leach field. So for that reason, we chose to go ahead and put the containment area for the goats where we did. So, and that's really, I can tell you that we're not raising these animals for commercial use whatsoever. We don't sell eggs, we don't sell, and we have no plans of doing that. Anything that the, any extra eggs that chickens might lay, we would gift to friends and family, and there's really no other. Now, so, and the other question also was asked, I wanted to speak to that point, is, you know, as far as the cost of feed versus, versus, you know, the cost of eggs. Maybe at some points, it can be argued that store, eggs sold in grocery stores could be cheaper specifically to, as compared to feeding some chickens with animal feed, but I will tell you that the trade-off is not, is not good for us from the standpoint of the health benefits of the eggs that these chickens produce versus the eggs that I could get at the grocery store. And the research is there for you to look at. Oh, the goats are about 40 pounds, about the size of a middle, middle, size like cocker spaniel or a little larger. And, I don't know, any other, average size of a sheep would be about 200 pounds.
Okay. In reading some of the material on this particular goat, it came to my attention that they go into heat every month, not once a year. Is that correct?
We don't have a billy goat.
No, I understand. Do they go into heat once a month?
I would defer that to Larissa. So if you would want me to go ahead and step down and...
Sure. Come on up, please.
Larissa Mallon, Tiny Hill Farm, 38 Willie Road, that's in Milton Mills, New Hampshire, 03852.
Thank you. So my question was, do these particular goats go into heat every month?
Okay, so all goats that are female will go into heat every 21 days.
21 days.
However, heat cycles for goats that aren't exposed to male goats, which we call bucks, they tend to be very, almost unnoticeable. They, they're, the majority of people, I offer driveway breeding services at our farm, the majority of people have absolutely no idea when their animals are in heat, and which is a difficulty that I have to deal with, because we're trying to get them to move them.
Okay. The other thing I had read in reference to this particular breed was that they're very verbal during the heat cycle, and you're indicating that that is only when there is a male present?
I would say yes, that is typically only when there's a male present. I'd say it would be no different than they, however they usually are throughout the day, unless you've got, you know, a beautiful boyfriend across the road, then things would be different.
And can you speak a little bit about the animal waste?
Absolutely. So Nigerian dwarf dairy goats and all goats are ruminants, so they have four stomachs. Those four stomachs are really very good at digesting their food. Their waste is kind of more akin to a rabbit. It's so well-digested that there's not a lot of odor. They're able to take a huge amount of hay and make it into a very small amount of waste. Of course, it's pelletized, so it's usually very, it spreads fairly easily. It's really very, not too easy to notice. I have a pen with 21 dairy goats in it. It's an acre, and you walk in there and it's just grass growing up. You don't really notice that there's pellets of goat feces anywhere, just because it disintegrates so quickly, and it just kind of gets dispersed amongst the grass.
Okay.
I can speak a little more about the size, if that's something that is important.
I think the reading was that they're 17 to 19 inches in height, correct?
Yes, yeah. There are no way at all what I consider them to be a large livestock animal. They, any of the livestock equipment that you buy for livestock, especially for goats, like milking stands and things to do their hooves, none of those things fit Nigerian dwarf dairy goats. We have to have, buy specialized equipment that fits them, because they're really, truly not a large livestock species at all. They don't, I mean, they, I have, like I said, many, many on an acre, and then I have two golden retrievers that are significantly bigger than all of my goats. You know, maybe a quarter the size of a standard-sized dairy breed is about the size that they are. Nigerian dwarfs are the smallest dairy, or the smallest goat breed on the planet, so they're pretty small.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah. So goats in general, what's the range that goats in general would weigh?
Oh, gosh, that's a great question. So when Nigerian dwarf dairy goats are born, two or three pounds. A large size, one of the largest dairy breeds we have in the U.S. would be a Nubian or a Sanin. Those are maybe 250 pounds for adult bucks. They're quite a bit larger.
So it would be fair to say, I'm guessing, that some goats might be very equivalent to the size of a sheep, and we're saying that this particular breed is not?
It depends on the breed of the sheep, I would say. Yeah, because sheep come in different ranges. Average sheep is going to be quite large, but there are some very small sheep breeds as well. Some miniature sheep breeds like baby dolls and things like that, that would be considered, like, kind of equivalent to a Nigerian dwarf in terms of size. So I think you might run into this same issue.
So as an expert witness with 21 of these little goats, are you required to have a variance in your particular municipality in order to operate a business for 21 of them?
No, I am not.
No.
No, I'm not.
Any other questions?
Oh, sure. Well, I mean, they're smaller animals, so anybody knows if you've got a little teeny-tiny chihuahua and you're poop scooping behind them, it's going to be not as much of a big deal as if you're poop scooping behind a St. Bernard. So it's significantly less waste. And again, there's really no odor. I have a very large pen with a lot of goats, and I can say that, you know, when anybody comes to visit, they say, "I didn't even know you have livestock here." They, you know, and I am by no means someone who's really good with the manure management. We typically just let it compost into the soil. So most, you know, most folks don't know we have any livestock, they really have little to no odor whatsoever, and, you know, they're the kind of animal where you can have a whole big bunch of them, and typically, folks won't even, sometimes don't even know that they're there, so.
Do you have experience, do you have experience with chickens?
I do, yes, I do.
So you have chickens on your property as well?
Yes, we raise exhibition bantams, and I also raise different breeds of layers as well.
And the odor from the chicken waste, is it, is it about the same as the goat, or more or less?
I'd say goat's odor would be significantly less than chickens. And that, again, is because their digestive systems are different. You know, chickens really aren't digesting as much, so the waste is not nearly as concentrated, also being birds, it's physiologically a little bit different.
And the goats on this property are kept in a pen. I was there, and that's what I observed. That's the case, right?
Yes, they, yes. Yeah, I would recommend anybody who has goats to always keep them in a pen, for sure.
All right, so they're not free-roaming goats?
Yeah, no, no, no. Yeah. When they're not been attended to, yes, that's correct.
The applicant mentioned that the goats eat poison ivy and eradicate, now I can't read my note here, but they eat poison ivy, and she prefers that than using a chemical to kill poison ivy on the property. So it just, the question comes to mind, how are they eradicating the poison ivy off the property if they're kept in a pen?
There's one here as well, if you wanted to sit, yeah.
I've done some research on this, that temporary electric fencing can be installed around my tree areas that will contain the goats when I need them to graze down to the overgrowth of the poison ivy. And it's mostly between, there's not as much of the poison ivy going one direction versus the other direction, it's more so on the other side of the property, if you will. So, yes, I would not just cut them loose and let them run, because they would be monitored or watched or contained with an electric fencing.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. So your property, I believe, sits on the north side of the abutter on your right. Am I right? And I apologize, I don't have a map in front of me. I'm online, I'm doing this remote, I wasn't able to print anything up. But as the compass goes, is your property north of the property to your right, your right of butter?
Yes, I'm not sure.
This is north.
Right, okay.
This is your property, is the abutter is complaining here.
Oh, yes.
And so they're to their south.
Yes, so they are, the, we are north of the complaining neighbor, yes.
Okay. So my next question is, as far as the co-enforcement officer, and I do have a letter in front of me that he wrote, and he was talking about either moving the animals in a different location on your property, and you explained that that would be a hardship because of the location of your leach field, getting heavy equipment back there. And when we were on your property doing a site visit, for one, me, and it came up at the last meeting, the odor was, was really strong. And if you're on the north side of the property that is complaining about odor, then the odor stands to reason, the wind's blowing predominantly from the north, so they're getting that odor. Now, your expert testified that it's the chickens that are giving off the high odor instead of the goats. So it doesn't make sense...
I think her testimony was that she, that chickens would, would create more of an odor than a goat, comparatively speaking.
Correct.
And I don't know that, everybody's senses are different. Actually, Alexandra asked me, when you guys were doing the site walk, she asked me, "Why does it smell so much better back there than it does up here by the road?" I told her I couldn't explain that. So I guess your perception was that you smelled something. And I've had guests and people come on the property, because actually, I was concerned. I said, you know, "Do you smell anything?" Because I don't know if it's just me, but I don't, really don't smell anything. Now, during the rainy season, we had a lot of rain this summer. It seemed like it wouldn't stop. During the rainy time, I did struggle with controlling, I guess, if you will, because the rain kind of acts as a damper, in a sense, and I was buying lots of the pine pellets to try and manage any kind of odor that could potentially be put off by the mixture of water and whatever. Because you know, the animals, because they do walk out of the chicken run, and they do come, run around the yard and so forth, there is that potential, potentially. But I, I asked several people to come on the property and just tell me objectively, "Do you smell anything?" Because I do want to be a good neighbor. And I'm telling you, nobody could smell anything, and they actually, the inspector, he had actually stated that he really didn't smell anything. So I guess it is, it is a, okay, yeah. It is subjective.
Mr. Thibodeau, do you have any other questions?
No, I don't think so. Other, you know, I can just, as, I can testify to, to what I smell the day I was out there. And when I walked to the, to the south side of your property, it was extremely strong. When I walked onto your property, it was extremely strong odors. And now I just learned that it was from the chickens and not the goats, primarily. And that, and that I also just learned that when it rains, it exacerbates these odors to the point where you smelled it yourself, and you were trying to tone it down with some pine pellets.
Well, that was back in the summer, when it, you know, anyway.
Yeah, again, regardless of when it was, the fact is that, that the odors were there and strong enough so that it was offensive to an abutter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I would like to correct the record. It was Ms. Flanagan who made that comment, I heard her say it.
I apologize.
That, that's fine. I'm going to open up at this time to public comment, if there are no other zoning board questions. Okay. Opening to public comment, is there anyone online?
Madam Chair, is anybody online for or against this application?
Okay. Before, I think we have someone that would like to speak. Before we do that, could someone please read the, there's a very particular variance that the administrator was applying to this case. Could we please read that? The ordinance. I think it would be helpful for the board, I would find it helpful. Okay, thank you.
Under permitted uses, 3.1.6 of the zoning ordinance stating the Site Plan Review Regulations, all multifamily dwelling units and non-residential development shall comply with the Site Plan Review Regulations of the Town of Barrington.
Can we read that portion of it?
So she read the portion on that there.
And then the keeping of the farm animals?
And then if you go to the definition of commercial keeping of farm animals.
I think it's important that we record that. I think it's important that we record that. I think the reason this is important for the board to hear is, this is what we're being asked to have an appeal from, is that interpretation of that particular ordinance.
Under the definitions of agricultural use of commercial keeping of farm animals, the keeping of domestic farm animals, i.e. chickens, ducks, rabbits, and other similar animals at a rate greater than one per 5,000 square feet of lot area or for financial gain. The keeping of horses, cows, pigs, sheep, and similar animals at a rate of higher than one per 40,000 square feet of lot area.
So during that last meeting, what it come down to is she could keep like all of her chickens and her ducks and she was in compliance, or she got rid of all of them and
And keep the goats.
She was in compliance.
Can we read the list of animals, I, I want to hear the language of that piece one more time.
Yep.
Is anybody else, I, I think it's really important because this is key to the AA.
The keeping of domestic farm animals, i.e. chickens, ducks, rabbits, and other similar animals at the rate greater than one per 5,000 square feet of lot area or for financial gain. The keeping of horses, cows, pigs, sheep, and similar animals at a rate higher than one per 40,000 square feet of lot area.
So the key here is the interpretation of and similar animals, okay, very good.
Wait, there's one more thing, so if you do.
Please.
So.
Please.
Farm, farm animals, the other definition that's in the zoning too. It says cattle, calves, horses, mules, swine, sheep, goats, poultry, or other similar birds and animals. It does not include house pets such as dogs, cats, or other similar animals. So I guess the argument comes down to is.
One more time on that, please.
So farm animals is cattle, calves, horses, mules, swine, sheep, goats, poultry, or other similar birds and animals. It does not include um house pets such as dogs, cats, or other similar animals. So the, I guess what it comes down to is a miniature goat a farm animal, or is it a domestic pet, that's kind of where they.
Define the term farm, I can, I consider a farm, working farm, as a money-making opportunity.
I don't think your microphone is on, Cheryl.
I said, I'd like to define the term farm. My interpretation, the way I, I understand it, a farm is a business, it's a money-making operation. Any animal kept on that farm is valuable to the farm's financial situation. And that's how I would determine a farm animal. And I, so I think we need to decide, well, she actually isn't doing a commercial farm, this is just, this has a few animals on her property.
So if we want to look at zoning, farm, definition of farm refers you to agricultural use. And agricultural use is what was read originally about the keeping of the commercial animals. So that's what's written in our zoning.
So they, they cross each other and loop back around. I, I think clearly in the ordinance, each of us could have an interpretation, but domesticated cats and dogs are being treated differently than any livestock, is what I'm getting from this.
Another comment, just as someone who keeps chickens and about the odor, yes. A- any odor that you're smelling on that property comes from those chickens, geese, whatever. Um, however, and it, and it is, it makes sense that you'd smell it in one spot and not another, I can't explain it. I have chickens, sometimes I wa- I'm, what are we, about, about 100 feet from our coop, maybe? Maybe a little bit more, sometimes I walk out my door and I can smell them, other times I can't at all. And other times I'm standing right beside the coop and I can't smell it. What I can smell is when I open that coop door, even after it's just been cleaned, there is a slight odor. Um, a week after it's cleaned, the odor's in the coop, but I may, and you can pick up the bird and you don't smell anything. It's, I, it's just, I don't know what it is, but, and it, it tends to go around, like I said, it's, sometimes I don't smell it at all.
Okay, thank you.
It's just a, it depends on the weather and the wind possibly, I don't know.
Public comment, please. If you'll just make sure the middle button is pressed and that the green light is on.
Hi, I'm Lori Hodgson, and my husband Chad Hodgson, Barrington residence for 26 years. Um, my husband's gonna speak, I'm just gonna, again, um, just reiterate like last time that um, the farm is very close to our back deck, we are unable to um have family dinners out on our deck or go out on the deck to read. Very close to our bedroom windows and living room windows, um, spring, summer, fall, we can't keep our windows open, we have to run the air conditioners. And also have to keep our windows closed um due to the noise, the squawking, um, and I don't know if it's, I think it's the, the Chinese geese that are, and the roosters are so loud, I mean, at, you know, 4:00, 4:30 in the morning until, you know, bedtime or beyond that, so. Um, we cannot enjoy our property, it's also a, a huge depreciation of our property as well. If we want to sell because we're not happy with um the situation and um with the variance being allowed, um, it's gonna depreciate our property and even for those properties around us as well in the future as, as a comp. Um, we just ask that you um also realize too that if this variance is allowed, then, you know, a lot of other variances may be come before you.
So just so we can clarify, this is not about a variance. Um, presented before us is an administrative appeal, and the board's decision is to be made whether or not the assistant zoning administrator should not, should not have deemed this to require the variance to begin with. So that's what we're being presented with, go ahead, please.
So, I guess, I mean, like, the original decision was to deny the variance request for this.
That is correct.
And so, uh, we felt that the zoning board's original decision um was the correct one, and it upheld the intent of the town of Barrington zoning ordinance to protect the peaceful enjoyment of, you know, our property and our property values um for adjoining lots and neighborhoods. Um, we feel that they've been in violation of the zoning ordinance for approximately eight months now. Um, for the excessive noise from the geese, the roosters, the, the goats. Um, they're not as frequent as the, the rooster and the geese, but they're, they're loud as well. Um, the offensive odor is awful during the spring, summer, and fall, I mean, it is, literally makes you sick to your stomach when it happens. Um, and it's difficult to, to live in our property and not be able to go outside of our house and uh, not be able to have people over outside um without gagging. Um, it's, uh, they continue to violate the zoning ordinance with their free-ranging chickens that continue to go on our property. Um, it depreciates the property value of ours, like my wife said, uh, if we were to sell the house, we'd have to sell it for a significantly reduced price due to the, the noise and the odor in the site. Um, that affects not only our property, but if we had to sell at a lower price, now it affects everybody's property in the neighborhood because now we're set as a comp, as a lower price. And this is due, you know, not only from the odor of the sound in the site, but also the excess farm animals that they have on the lot that's more than allowed per the zoning ordinance.
And there's also rundown, our septic, um, there's rundown of waste, um, that could be going right into our drinking water and to our septic because we're downhill from them and where it's right on our property line.
So, I mean, so that's, that's our biggest concern, it's just we can't enjoy our property the way we should be able to, right? Um, we also additionally did some research and found that there is a covenant in place for Coachman Estates that prohibits any farm animals and fowl from being maintained on any lot in the subdivision.
One more time, it prevents what?
There is, there is a covenant for Coachman's.
Please don't bring it forward to us, unfortunately, me, fortunately or unfortunately, that, I'm actually grateful for this, but zoning boards are not able to enforce protective covenants, but you certainly can read the protective covenant. We, we are not here to enforce it, though.
So the, and the reason why I, I bring it up is because I think it just demonstrates the intent of Coachman Estates being a residential neighborhood, not farmland.
Okay, could you read the line that you're referring to?
It says, no farm animals or fowl shall be maintained on any lot. A reasonable number of household pets shall be allowed, but shall not be bred or maintained for purposes of resale. No animals shall create unreasonable noise or create a nuisance or annoyance to neighbors.
Okay, so again, just so I'm very, very clear, it is not the, your, your neighborhood association would have to pursue whatever you're pursuing that has nothing to do with the zoning board.
I understand, that was, that was just to present the intent of the neighborhood.
Okay, anything else that you feel that you need to present at this time?
I think that's it, just that the zoning ordinance of Barrington was established to protect landowners from uh detrimental effects and uses of neighboring properties, and that's, that's why we're opposing.
Okay. Any questions? No. Anyone online? No. Anything else you feel you need to present? No, okay, so at this time I will close public comment in reference to case 2265014, appeal owners Daryl and Michelle Kelly. Is there anything else that you feel you would like to present from a legal perspective in reference to the um zoning ordinances and definitions that we had read?
I think you've hit all the points, um, but it is important to note is miniature goats come into the house and they're, you can, an alternative way of looking at the case is that they're more like a dog and not a farm animal.
An alternative way to looking at the case is that they're more like a dog. Okay, that is an alternative way to look at it, thank you, sir. Okay. Um, anyone ready to make a motion in reference to the administrative appeal? Understanding that um the focus is, did the assistant zoning administrator apply the zoning regulations appropriately? So, there are two motions that can be made in reference to administrative decision. Either the administrative officer used an appropriate description of the use of the property and that it is not permitted, and that their decision, their original decision in bringing that forward was reasonable and applied appropriately, or the motion would be to reverse the administrative officer's decision and that their reasoning in the case was not appropriate and that um the facts of the case disagree with how the zoning ordinance was interpreted. Well, please make a motion. If you. You got it, okay, thank you.
I make a motion.
Is your microphone on?
I make a motion to override the decision of the administrative officer regarding the section, um, what's the section of the ordinance? Of the Barrington zoning ordinance, the administrative, the administrative officer held that the proposed use, described the proposed use, proposed use of keeping of farm animals is not permitted because of reasoning, um, or because there were, um, there were too many goats that put them over the, the allowed limit for animals. I find the decision to be inconsistent with 3.6.1 of the, 3.1.6 of the Barrington zoning ordinance because my reasoning for this is, from hearing the testimony of your butters, the problem is the poultry. They're allowed to have them, they're allowed to have the poultry. Um, the mini goats are they're not farm animals, they're, they're, I mean, they're, they're not usable farm animals, and I think the impact on their property is minor. And to allow her to keep her goats, I think would be, I think that would be a fair, fair assessment of this, I think that would be fair to do because they are not the problem, the problem is the chickens, and she's allowed to have the chickens and geese. That's an allowable use on her lot. So I think that to, for us, to make a determination that she had to eliminate the goats, wouldn't serve any purpose.
Thank you, do I have a second?
A second.
Any other comments or needed information before we take a roll call vote?
Well, my only comment was not, she had a choice based on our discussion, so it's not just about the goats. Like in order, if we assume that they are farm animals, she could still conceivably keep the goats and get rid of the other animals, so it's not just, you know, and, yeah, it's not just about the goats.
So the board is tasked with deciding whether the assistant zoning administrator applied the written zoning ordinance correctly, and was the reasoning behind the original decision appropriate? And we have a first and a second for reversing the decision of the administering officer at this time, so I'm going to take a roll call vote, um, beginning with Mr. Thibodeau online, please.
I'm gonna vote nay, which means I do not agree with the motion.
Simak, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
Flanagan, nay.
And as much as emotionally I would like to make a different decision, I do not feel the administrative officer aired in their decision-making, so I will also vote nay. That's it? Okay, thank you. Moving on, your action items are, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the zoning board of adjustment, December 20th meeting, only three of us were present, so I will only take a motion from three members uh that were present.
I move we approve the minutes as drafted for the December 20th, 2023 meeting.
And I would give a second on that, roll call vote, please, beginning with, um, I gotta pronounce your last, yeah, thank you. And Jackie.
Flanagan, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Approval of the meeting minutes, Carrie. Who? Oh, yeah, you, you could both state that you're abstaining, Mr. Thibodeau?
I abstained, I wasn't at the meeting, so I will abstain.
And Mrs. Hawkins, could you as well? Vote to abstain from the meeting minute vote, please, thank you. Our next zoning board meeting is
February 21st, and um, I just had a, a quick thing other, under other business, just to notify the board. Um, if you've been following our zoning amendments, going through the planning board right now, I just um left a copy for you all. Um, there's two different attachments, it's labeled number six that I left for you. Um, the first one that says proposed warrant articles, majority of those had passed to the planning board, there will be a second public hearing um on January 25th, in case of inclement weather, it'll be held the next day at January 26th at 6:30 PM here. Um, just in case anybody wanted to come to that, just want to let you all know.
Can I send something written in?
Yes, you may.
I, I would like to, there.
Should I be present or something?
The first three zoning articles, I would like to write something in reference to, so. Thank you.
And I have to announce that I am resigning from the board.
You are.
It's too much.
Okay.
With, with mana, it's just too much for me to get here.
Understanding, um, I'm sad to hear that. Very sad to hear that.
I need something in writing for Kim, for the town clerk.
And have we sent the application to the individual? And have we sent the application to the individual at 17 Stone Farm Drive that I gave you on a sheet of paper at the last meeting?
I've not sent it to her, but I asked her about it.
Okay.
I will follow up.
Can you do that and check the box instead of alternate for regular, and I'll have a conversation? Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So like let's, because this.
Do we need to adjourn first?
Is it appropriate?
Is it appropriate for the board?
If an ex, I don't know.
Okay, so let's, I, I think we do need a motion to adjourn, and then you may have to, your question may have to go to legal, not us, so. Motion?
I move we adjourn.
And I second that motion? Roll call vote, beginning with, thank you.
Simak, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
Flanagan, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. So we are adjourned. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Paul. Enjoy Florida.
Stay off those hot.